Limburg Schools Board of Education Meeting Number 1528 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Having that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Karen, second by Jennifer. As with any virtual meetings, we will do a roll call vote. Mike Shamia, yes. Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Mike Tischlis? And Dr. Kathy Colak-Lorenz? Okay, motion passes seven zero. In order to meet the current St. Louis County guidelines, we are meeting in a socially-distanced school environment with just the cabinet and board members only. In order to reduce the spread of COVID-19, the meeting will stream online via the district's YouTube channel. We go to 4.0, which is special recognitions, and tonight we have Concord Elementary School as our recognition school. So I believe, are we turning it over to Dr. Moeman? Or maybe not?
Okay, that's okay. Hello and good evening from Concord Elementary School. We are so excited to have the opportunity to recognize two of our Concord students and our 2020 Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Person of the Year. Well, I first thank our board for taking the time to allow us to honor these very special people. First, I would like to honor Ava Gamaio. Ava, will you give us a little wave? Hi, there's Ava. And Ava is currently participating in Miss Stryker's class. Ava is being recognized tonight for being so motivated during virtual learning. Her teacher loves that she always participates in discussions and gives her best effort on every assignment. She consistently displays a growth mindset and revises her work to make it the best it can be. She is kind and caring to her classmates and is a great team player, both in school and on the volleyball court. We are so proud of you, Ms. Ava. So congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight. Ms. Coitrell, I'll let it, turn it over to you.
Okay, welcome. Next, we would like to recognize Kinley Lord. Kinley, give us all a wave so we can see you on the screen. Hi, Kinley. Kinley is a fifth grader in Mrs. Shaefer's class, and we are so proud to recognize her tonight as a Concord leader. Kinley is an outstanding student overall. She's smart, respectful, hardworking, kind, determined, but did you know she is the creator and founder of Dino Nugget Incorporated? Kinley clearly shines when given a leadership role, as she took an idea of Tech Tip Tuesday and gave it the most amazing creative spin. She helped teach the class technology tips, but through the eyes of Mr. Dino Nugget, Chef Jeff, Wanda, and a whole slew of unique characters. But let's not also forget that she has outstanding rap skills. Kinley is always willing to help anyone with their technology issues and will always say yes to dress-up day. Kinley leads by example and will forever put a smile on your face. Congratulations to Kinley. We are extremely proud to recognize you as one of our Concord leaders.
Way to go, Kinley and Ava. Awesome.
Now, we're going to move over to our 2020 Support Staff Person of the Year. I am so honored to be able to tell you about Mrs. Corey Hackett, one of our SSD paraprofessionals. Corey, give us a wave so we can see you on the screen. There's Mrs. H. We are so fortunate to have Corey at Concord. She is one of the kindest people that I know. I would like to share some of the wonderful things her colleagues have said about her. Corey will drop it all to help you, and she always does it with a smile. She works tirelessly. Corey has a special skill and gift with working with students. Her flexibility and kindness make Concord a better place. Corey was instrumental in beginning the Concord Kindness Club a few years ago. We couldn't be more appreciative of all you do, Corey. Congratulations on being recognized as our 2020 Support Staff Person of the Year. Corey, would you like to share a few words with us? All right, thank you, Corey.
Oh, hang on, I forgot to.
Oh, I love it.
Technical difficulties like always. I just want to take a minute to thank everybody that I've ever had the chance to work with, whether it was with early childhood many moons ago, my friends at Savington, and everybody at Concord. You guys make my job so much easier and so much more fun, and I could not do it without anyone who makes me the better person that I am. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Corey. And now I have the honor of presenting our 2020 Teacher of the Year.
Because I'm not going to get screwed this. We may have those metal ones.
Let me hold on here. Okay, there we go. Angela has been with our Limburg district for over 22 years, both as a first-grade teacher and a reading specialist. She goes above and beyond for her students by looking at each child as an individual and then differentiating instruction for them. Angela truly cares about all of her students, and that love can be seen with all of the activities that she does with them, day in and day out. Angela's committing to helping all students be successful at reading. This lady puts in endless hours of training and planning to help her students and also helps out her colleagues when they need reading advice. When we had a new reading program, Angela was the one who was there every night, staying late, planning, and we know she has that beautiful family there, but she is able to just go at it and really support her students. She is highly respected and truly an expert reading specialist. But most importantly, Angela has a huge heart. She is always someone you can count on in any situation. Her dedication to her students and her craft have never wavered, and she pushes through like a tune. Angela, thank you for being our 2020 Teacher of the Year, and would you like to say a few words? Okay.
Hi, guys. I just want to take a second to thank my village, and by that I'm referring to the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." I feel like it takes a village to be an effective teacher. So to the Board of Education and to my administrators, thank you for the wonderful working environment you give us. Thank you for the opportunities that you provide and for trusting us as teachers. To my colleagues, thank you so much for nominating me for this recognition. I get, I learned so much from all of you, your expertise and your humor. It has kept me sane over the years, for sure. To the parents in the district, thank you for your support. We have the best PTG ever, and thanks for sending us your adorable children. And lastly, thank you to my family, my parents, my siblings. Your love and your support and your encouragement have helped me through all of this. So I couldn't do this job without my village. So thank you, guys.
Awesome. That was so wonderful. Thank you, Angela. All right, well, congratulations again to Ava Kinley, Corey, and Miss Angela. Later this week, the school board president, Mr. Shamia, and then Dr. Lake, Superintendent Dr. Lake, will be visiting Concord to recognize these amazing individuals. So with that, we're thankful for all of you joining us virtually. I know this is kind of a different way to celebrate, but it sure did feel good to see all of you here tonight, and we will send it back to you, Mr. Shamia.
Thank you so much. That was great, and I believe also the teacher and support staff get a $25 Spirit Award at the visit, and the students will get a Limburg t-shirt, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll look forward to that visit. We'll go back to 3.0 in our agenda as I mistakenly skipped the Pledge of Allegiance, so those who were able, please stay in.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we will move to 5.0, which is special resolutions and commendations. We do have one, 5.0101, which is for the Limburg leaders for this year, 2021. We have a great group of recipients of this year's award, and I believe in our virtual ceremony, so to speak, we're also recognizing the 2020 Limburg leaders as well this year. So may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mike, second by Kristi. We'll do a roll call vote. Mike Shamia, yes. Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Mike Tischlis?
Yeah.
And Dr. Kathy Colak-Lorenz?
Yes.
Okay, seven oh. That motion carries. Thank you. 6.0 will go as citizen comments regarding agenda items. We have none. Any that are presented, though, someone will, you can present them via email at this time to boe@limburgschools.ws, and someone will be in contact regarding your comments from the district. 7.0 communications, 7.01, calendar events, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, so in March, we're going to have our spring break. It starts, there's no school on March 19th. That's the end of the third quarter, and then spring break will follow. The following week, March 22nd through the 26th, there is a Board Advisory Committee meeting, teaching and learning, on March 30th, and then the Board Advisory Finance Committee meeting is on April the 8th. Also, we will have no school K through 12 and the Limburg ECE on Monday, April the 5th, and then we'll be back here for our April 13th workshop and regular meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary. 7.02 is our report of meetings. So anybody who attended a meeting, whether in person or virtually, if you have something to report?
I attended the SSD Governing Council meeting last week, and the big thing on the agenda was the election of new Board of Education members. And so they had three sub-districts who are opening, and Sub District Five represents Limburg, and ours was open, and Dr. Meredith Byers from Kirkwood was elected to that spot. So that's all.
Thank you. Any other meetings to report?
I attended several, and it was a whole week of Limburg meetings. Every day after work, there was meeting, 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 so it was pretty fun. But what I just wanted to share is, out of those conversations, overall, what came was that our students, and since we're talking about curriculum, this fits right in, that our students are missing out on writing by hand because we're doing everything on the computer. And as we all know, there's that connection from the brain to the hand that really helps out with learning. So several of the, some parents and teachers agreed with that. And then the other one was helping our students to learn how to set boundaries. They're so accustomed to right now answering the text, or right now in the chat, or right now getting something done. So I just want to share that with the board, that those are some higher learnings that came out of several different meetings. And that's it. Mike and I get to go to in-person, Mike, Dr. Tischlis and I, to in-person at Legislative Day in Jeff City next month, so we're pretty excited about that.
That'll be nice.
That's it.
We'll look forward to it. They will be in-person. That's something we're shooting for, but it looks like.
I think so.
That'd be great. Thank you. 7.03, under announcements, we have none, so we'll go to 7.04, which is the review of the upcoming Board of Education meetings.
Yeah, so on April 13th, we will have a board workshop where we will receive the learning report, the board learning report, and we'll review the 20, 21, 22 Compass Goals. Following that workshop, we will have our board meeting. It is a special meeting where we will elect the newly-elected members of the Board of Education. Immediately following that meeting, we'll have a short, like, two-minute meeting where we will reorganize the board, and then following the board reorganization, we'll have a regular board meeting where we are going to read the, we're going to have the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for 21, 22, first reading, and then the first reading of the Safety Program, Emergency Response and Intervention Plan Program Evaluation.
Perfect, thank you. 7.05, member appointments, we have none. 7.06 is our MSBA report, which we are not showing as we're meeting virtually, but we do invite you to click on Board Docs and view this month's report there. 8.0 is special reports, so this is the part, the time when we do our cabinet updates, and Joel, I think you have one meeting to report on, right? Finance?
Yes, we had our Finance Committee meeting last week, which was on Thursday, always a Thursday prior to the board meeting, and we went over the agenda items that are on the schedule for today. Really was a quick meeting, not a lot of items on the agenda. No budget amendments this month, so that was a first.
All right, thank you. Brian, the Human Resources meeting?
Thank you. Yes, we went over updated vaccine information about options for K-12 school employees. We reviewed enrollment projections, and we walked through the process of staffing meetings with principals, the agenda for those meetings, and we reviewed the personnel report for the month.
Okay, thank you. Tara, I believe you have all three of your meetings to report on.
We did. Yes, we had all three. So Technology Board Advisory, we really spent the meeting focused on digital wellness. As a district, we are in the process of putting together a scope and sequence around digital wellness, looking specifically at the areas of how to ensure our students are informed with their online presence, how they're alert, how they're balanced, how they're engaged, and also how they are inclusive. So looking at those threads of skills, we garnered some feedback from the Board Advisory that will help us as we develop the scope and sequence and ultimately work to build transparency with our families as well. Teaching and learning, we are really focusing, as we have been over the course of this entire year, on standards-based instruction, and specifically, we are looking at the elementary report card and what parents need in terms of how we're communicating student learning as we look at adopting that a little over a year from now. So some great feedback regarding how that should be presented to families and what they can potentially expect, and then also spend some time talking about our math adoption process as we are getting ready to finalize moving from the revision to the actual implementation of that new curriculum. And then lastly, for student life, we, in advance of the meeting, sent the members the Suicide Prevention Manual and gave them the opportunity to review that and give us feedback in terms of how we can ensure that we are being inclusive of all the various needs that we have in terms of ensuring student safety and communication with family in regards to student safety.
Right, thank you very much. And we also, in 8.02, have a curriculum update. Oh?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back for just a moment to what Joel reported in our Finance Committee meeting, and she did touch on, you know, there was a brief discussion about TIF. And we actually discovered at that meeting that the Crestwood TIF Commission, which has met one time and which we were in attendance, Dr. Lake, myself, and Joel, was postponed. So that was, that was scheduled, actually, for last week. So that, that second TIF Commission meeting, and again, this is regarding the Crestwood redevelopment, Crestwood Plaza redevelopment, which, you know, has significant consequences for our district, is postponed until, I believe, April 22nd, I think, somewhere around there. Just for those who are curious, wondering what's going on there, that's been changed, and at that time, you know, we expect the developers will flesh out their proposal more than they have so far. So we're looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. So in 8.02, we do have a curriculum update, the FastBridge reading and screening update, and NWEA MAP growth results as well.
Yes, so if you remember back to our January board workshop, we've been spending a lot of time really monitoring student learning, especially in the time of the pandemic and what that looks like for our students. So when we shared with you the work that was happening around our student achievement data, specifically how we're continuing to monitor FastBridge for early literacy, and then also the new implementation of NWEA MAP growth to really focus in on student growth measures and how to gauge student learning over time from fourth through eighth grade. At that time, we didn't have the updates from fall. We only had the fall data to share with you. So tonight, Dr. Craig Hamby, our director, Executive Director of Elementary Education, and Dr. Jill Lawson, our Executive Director of Assessment and Student Services, are going to go through the updated data regarding FastBridge and NWEA. So I'm going to turn it over to Craig to start.
Thank you, Tara. So I'll begin by speaking about our FastBridge winter screenings, and then about halfway through, I'll turn it over to Jill to talk about NWEA. So quick reminder, in case anyone forgot, we have been dealing with COVID-19 this school year, so no, nothing's been normal. So just a reminder, as we look at our results, some of our students have taken the assessments virtually, some of our students went hybrid, some in person. The amount of days that kids have been in person, just so many variables that teachers and students have dealt with this year, just something to keep in mind. Understanding FastBridge scores, so some of our scores are benchmark, FastBridge benchmarks, and some of them are national norms as we go through. And then the tests that we're looking at, when we're in kindergarten first, we'll be looking at early reading scores. When we transition to second and third grade, we move to A-reading, which kind of takes the place of the early reading, and then we have CBM, which is really a decoding, we're reading words test for that. So kindergarten, the sub-tests that they have on their, their early reading are nonsense words, word segmenting, letter sounds, and onset sounds. So with kindergarten, this is information, hopefully I didn't go too far. I actually shared this with you, I think it was in January, the January board meeting, maybe February, I can't remember which one. So this isn't anything new, but I thought I'd throw it back in here just so we'd have everything together. But one thing I wanted to point out, we had mentioned the last time we looked at this kindergarten data was, this year was kind of comparable to two years ago, the first year that we used a FastBridge screener. But one thing to make note of is, back in 1819, we had 37% in high risk, and this winter, with our kindergartners, that was down to 26. So even though the overall 31 and 36 that were above out of the risk category, we had a lot fewer students in the high-risk category this winter. So just something to take note of. Then as we move into first grade, the early reading tests, once again, nonsense words, word segmenting, sight words, and CBM. So this is that oral reading fluency where the students are just reading a passage, and they're seeing how many words they can read correctly in one minute. So what you see on this chart, we have the winter of 1920, so it's the first graders when they were in kindergarten, last winter, one year ago, then their fall score, and then their winter score now. So 58% above benchmark this time last year, and the fall 51, and then currently 50% above the benchmark for first grade. This is just representing those same numbers in graphic form, but as you can see, not too much difference between our fall and our winter scores, almost exactly the same as they were in the fall when we screened the winter. So it'll be interesting to see what things look like in the spring after we've had a full year of instruction. So looking at early reading in first grade from year to year, so we were 55% last year's first graders, and this year's first graders are at 50%. So I won't, you know, I wouldn't say, it's a, it's a different year this year. There's two different things we're looking at, but I'm pretty proud of those kids to hold, even at 50, even be close to where we were last year with all the challenges that they've had to deal with since the fourth quarter last year. As we move into second grade, now, second grade, we start to switch. We take A-reading, which is kind of a general, all kinds of general reading skills of the kids, taking an adaptive test, and they also take the CBM, which once again is an oral reading fluency test. So here with our second graders, you can see winter, when they were in first grade one year ago, 87% above benchmark, and then they were 74% in the fall and at 76% now. So a little gain from the fall to now. It's hard to compare against last year. And then as they get into the CBM, the oral reading fluency, in the same ballpark, 82% last year and 76% this year. As we look from year to year, last year's second graders were at 68% above benchmark, and this year's second graders in the winter at 63. Moving on to third grade, third grade does the exact same battery of tests as second grade does. So our current third graders, when they were in second grade in the winter, 69%. This fall, they were at 74%, and then at 71% here in the winter of third grade. Now, one thing we want to say is that I felt it was, oh, can I go back here? My second grade CBM fell from, let me see if I can find it. I'll find it in a little bit and tell you what it is. One of our second grade, in the high risk, we were last year at 19% and fell to 7% this year. So even though they're not above the benchmark out of the risk category, we moved a lot to, from the high risk to the some risk category. And let's see, so that's our cohort comparison I just talked about. Here it is graphically. You can see the numbers. Not a lot of change. Third grade's been, been holding steady, if not more so. And then our third year, third grade year-to-year comparison, last year in the winter, third grade, 69%, and this year in the winter, third grade has actually improved with a better score than what they had last year. CBM, last year when these students were in second grade, 78% above the benchmark, and the fall, they were at 83%, and they were at 82% here in the winter, but still better to where, growth from where they were last year in the winter. So third grade doing outstanding regardless of the situation that they've had to deal with this year. And then our graph, you can see steady growth across the years. I guess the, the main thing to take away from this is you want to be in the blue. The blue is where you want to be, and we have a giant bar of blue out there for our third graders, so very good to see that. And our year-to-year comparison, last year's third graders were at 84% above benchmark, and this year in the winter, 82%. So holding steady, all things considered, for our third graders. So that wraps up the data from FastBridge. Before we move to NWEA, what questions might you have?
I have two. I know that kind of when we started using FastBridge, it seemed like we were using a few different tests here and there, and so have we kind of found the ones we're sticking with and we're planning to use those unless we find something better?
We, yeah, we've settled in nicely. I think the, we started off with early read, or early read, auto reading, and then we moved to A-reading. We might move to a more comprehensive where it includes both of those next year, but it will still be comparable, comparable numbers because we'll have both tests. So we won't be subtracting anything that we can't compare. So I think we've settled into what we're going to be using.
All right, and then my other one is, I know that we offer the FastBridge if, like, parent or teacher referral for above third grade. Do we not have a large enough sample size to really report on that?
We have the number, we have the data. I could pull that, but it is, it's, you know, just a handful of students.
Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions for FastBridge?
Was there anything new or different? I believe we added some different changes to our curriculum, or we added a new program minus COVID. Could we see any positive effects in that?
So I, I think you started to see a lot of positive effects last year. So some of those numbers that looked awesome last year, and it looks like we stepped back a little bit. Our hope is to get back to that next year. But I do believe Sande having, we have a phonics or word work program, K through five, that's consistent through all the grade levels, which is definitely going to help. And then a big piece that was missing was the phonemic awareness piece. So K and one use Hagerty now, which was kind of absent from our instruction beforehand. So that's going to help out tremendously also. So, you know, this year was kind of a, going all the way back to exactly one year from now, it's been kind of a curveball, but I'd like to see how the numbers pan out over the next couple of years to see the true picture.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to share.
Okay, so I'm going to share with you the winter NWEA MAP growth results. So in the fall, when I spoke at the, the board workshop, all I really had was performance data. But now that we have two data points, we can incorporate the growth data into our presentation. So that's really what it's going to be, be about tonight. All right, so here you'll see two charts. I just copied and pasted up here. And this is from NWEA. And these charts are where we go to look at the different norms and the means for each of the fall, winter, or spring assessment windows. So as you can see to the left, I don't know if you can see it very well, but to the left, we have the grade level, and then going across the fall, the winter mean and the spring mean. And they also include the standard deviation for those as well. But this is what we're looking at. So what I want to just illustrate is that we're in that winter window right now. So that is where we are referencing our different means for our students, depending on their grade level. So I have an example of reading and math up here as well. So when we take, when a student takes the NWEA MAP assessment, it's a through-course assessment. So it is completely adaptive. And it really will just, just kind of goes to illustrate, if a student is taking a test and answering the questions, and the green representing the students who are answering the questions correctly, the level of difficulty of the next question will go up. And as they, if they get a question wrong, it will start to go down. And so what it means, what that RIT level really means is, the RIT score is the level of difficulty at which a student is able to answer 50% of the questions correctly. So that is how the, that is how the assessment identifies that exact RIT level, that rash unit, the scale score that a student will have based on their level of difficulty. They start to answer their questions, and where they start to get to that 50% correctly, that's where the test begins to end, student, and that identifies their actual scale score. So for the MAP test, it's not for the NWEA MAP test, and they call it MAPS. So that's when I refer to them, not referring to the Missouri Assessment Plan. This is far superior to that. But what I would say is that when a student is getting a RIT score, it's not necessarily giving them a level of mastery. It's giving them a, it's identifying where, what exactly they know based on the questions they answer, but where they're ready to go when they're learning. So when we're looking at standards-based and competency-based and, you know, learning through a continuum, this, this assessment helps to support that idea of, let's find out where a student is and where they're ready to go next, and not necessarily where they are per their grade level. Because as we know, we serve students who are going to be below and above. And we want to make sure we're able to give them good instruction either way. So going to the next slide here, if I were a teacher, I didn't turn it off, I promise. It seems like I did. Okay. Okay, there we go. So if I were a classroom teacher, how I would take these scores and relate them to what I'm going to do in the classroom is I would look at this particular report that's on NWEA. And up at the top is a level of RIT bands, and they're, they're seven, 10. So teachers can go in and identify where their students scored by their particular level, and say, this is where our students are ready to learn, and particular skills and topics will go on. But why this is so good is because to the left of, the, the, the skills that show up in the center are the skills the students are ready to go. They're ready to learn. They're ready to develop at that level. But there are some times where students still need a little reinforcement, or we might want to challenge a student and give them a little, give them some skills that are beyond where they're, they are particularly scoring here. So what it does is it gives skills that teachers can reinforce and skills students are ready to develop. And also that teachers can start to introduce the challenge to, they want to go to the next, go to the next level in their learning. So getting to the performance, these, this is the performance data. So if we look to the left, we have the gray, and then we have, in the gray, the fall NWEA RIT mean, then the fall Limburg Schools RIT mean, and then winter NWEA RIT mean, and then the winter Limburg Schools mean RIT, I should say, so sorry. But what you can see is that going all the way down from fourth to eighth grade, we see that we are very, very close to the mean, to the, to the mean RIT. And being that these particular scores are pre-pandemic scores, and our students have had half of the instruction that they have had, you know, that they are so close. So looking at this, you would say, well, the students are doing pretty decent. We're going to get to some growth data that shows the impact of the students not being in person to the same amount that they were in the past. But you can see, when it comes to the performance, students are staying close to the average, the average score. That's for mathematics. So I'm just going to kind of hold it up there just a little bit. The, in almost every grade level except for fourth grade, and this was the same in the fall. We were one point short of the, of the, the mean. I swear I'm not turning that off. I don't, it's too, it's like, maybe I should have you do it? I'm going to go back, and it's, and then I'm going to barely touch it. Okay, so that's mathematics. Going to reading here. Our reading scores are above the mean. But I'm going to show you how, even though we have made it to the, you know, within, we're in that average, that 50, that mean, that 50%, we did not, in many areas, and I'll show you, meet the growth that was projected for reading. And in some cases, mathematics too. So that's why this test. We may have growth, but in a, according to the pre-pandemic norms, we didn't, and what was projected, we didn't meet the projected growth, our observed growth didn't meet the projected growth. And so I'll, I'll show you an example of what that looks like here. In just a minute. Before I get to the growth data, I wanted to just let you all know that we did, the NWEA has a language assessment as well, and we are doing a pilot assessment. We have one grade level from every building, fourth through eighth grade, who participate, excuse me, one classroom per grade level in each building participate. And so just when it, there is no, on this particular assessment, it's just performance data right now because we just started doing it in the winter. But as far as language goes, we have our winter norm for NWEA and our Limburg Schools norm for how we performed. In some places, extremely close and, and a few points higher in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Okay, so here we have our reading assessment scores. And so to the left, you'll, starting on the left, we have the grade, the fall RIT score, the winter RIT score, those are for our district, the observed growth, and then the projected growth. So every grade level has a projected growth, and it's high when you're very, very low when, as you get higher to, as you get into the higher grades. So in kindergarten, according to NWEA, you could grow 10, 11 points from one window to the next. But as you get into 12th grade, it may be a RIT score. So because as you get older, you put, start putting in more applications. So for this particular assessment, or for fall to winter growth, we see that we did make some growth in every area. However, it didn't meet the projected growth that was expected by the pre-pandemic norms that were set. So fourth grade observed growth, three, projected growth was 5.6. Fifth grade observed growth, two, projected growth was 4.5. In sixth grade, the observed growth was two, and projected 3.4. In seventh, the observed growth was two, and the projected was 2.7. And in eighth grade, the observed growth was one, but the projected was 2.4. And as you look, those projected growth numbers go down as the grade levels go up, as I just mentioned. And so you can see where we had our least amount of growth. Obviously, it's in fourth grade reading here. And our most amount of growth was in seventh grade. When we get into math, we were closer to our projected growth rates. So for fourth grade, observed was six, the projected growth, oh my gosh, I'm moving the wrong one. Okay, so what I think was, so in sixth grade, the observed growth was six, the projected growth was 6.5. So we were that five tenths away from meeting our target. In fifth grade, observed growth is five, and the projected growth was 5.7. In sixth grade, observed was three, and the projected growth was 4.9. And in seventh grade, our observed growth was four, projected was 3.9. So we were there, we were right there, one tenth above. And in eighth grade, the observed growth was three, and the projected ghost was, growth was 3.2. So as you can see by the visual as well, that sixth grade made the least amount of, even though they did show some growth, they did not meet that pre-pandemic projected growth. And so they, of all of our math scores, missed it the most. But eighth grade was the closest to, or fourth grade surpassed it, and eighth grade was the close, almost there.
Dr. Larson?
Yes.
I think you answered this, but on the, the growth, the projected growth is from NWEA. That's in a district set growth. Is that right?
That is in NWEA.
Okay, based on like what should happen in an educational system. Okay.
So, and it's, that is NWEA's mean growth. So that means any student that shows at least that percent will show 50 percentile, or will be in the 50th percentile of growth. So that is how that is set. So anybody that shows, students individually made way more growth than that, and some made just a point. So, you know, but that is the standard normed growth rate. And I'm sorry I was missing the projections on these. So really what I wanted to just, excuse me, missing the clicker on this. But one of the things I just wanted to show here is we will be moving to the spring norms. And one of the things that's going to happen here is, there is a trend of not as much growth from winter to spring. But we're still going to hope to just make that not true and just keep pushing through. We do hope that, or we do hope that we have the least disruption between winter and spring so we can maximize all of our instructional time to really do what matters and make sure our kids are closing those gaps for students.
I think one of the things that's really important about this data is it's changing the way we're talking about student learning. So when we're starting to have conversations with teachers, like, this is still very, very new for our teachers. So getting used to the platform of looking at this data, how do I use this data? How does it impact learning? And I think it's really important, as Jill referenced, in a COVID year, so many of our instructional practices look very different. The small group instruction that we would typically do and use this data to impact, you know, really accelerating student learning, that isn't happening in the same way. So we have the, not just the, the changes in instructional time within our schools, but also the changes in our strategies. So in a lot of ways, this data is, I feel like in some ways, it's serendipitous to do this in a, in a pandemic for, for many reasons. One, we actually get to see what's, what the impact is on students and how we can close those gaps for the future. But the other part is it's, it's giving us time to really understand what is the tool so that when we are in a traditional learning experience, learning environment, we can accelerate how we use it that much better.
The one last part of the thing I just wanted to mention is that after each of these benchmark windows, fall, winter, and spring, we're having one-on-one, well, we're, we're meeting with principals and their coaches and assistant principals to review the data, discuss changes that maybe, that need to take place, and things that we can take away from it. You know, we have our strengths, we have our areas of concern that we want to work on. But from there, they are going to their PLCs, their grade-level teams, and talking with them about the data. There's been a lot of conversations about data this year, and teachers really digging into the results, the, the information that comes from NWEA and how to read the data is really making some great changes with the conversations that are happening in PLCs.
So the thing I would say about this, if you think about the conversations we've been having around student achievement the last three years, it's, it's been about growth. And this is the instrument that is going to allow us. So we're rolling this out in, like Tara said, a pandemic learning environment. And what's exciting about this, it's no longer about, in the spring, did my kid score proficient? And if they didn't, then, oh, we're going to go on to the next level of standards, grade level of standards. If they didn't meet proficient in third grade, well, we're going to move them to fourth grade. This is about growth throughout the entire year, that a parent can have an ongoing conversation with their teacher, and their teacher can drill down with these reports to be able to say, look at where we started, you know, point A to point B, we're not where that kid needs to be, but man, look at the growth we've accomplished. And that's really going to be powerful. And as we learn to use this instrument, I think you're really going to see our student achievement really grow. And the fact that our numbers are right there, kind of with the national norm scores that were, correct me if I'm wrong, set in 2018. Is that, is that when they?
Created in 2018 and released in 2020.
Yeah. So again, this different learning environment's there. So I, I, I feel, yes, we got room to grow and whatever, but I feel like we got a really good baseline in a very challenging learning environment for all that I think Craig made the point, it's going to be exciting in the next 24 months, 18 months, to kind of see how much of that gap have we really closed and accelerated our kids. So we're super excited about this instrument, so.
May I have 10 more seconds for FastBridge?
No.
If you would, this is the, this is the slide, I got lost in my thoughts earlier. So second grade CBM cohort. So if you look at our second graders where they were in the fall, 74% above benchmark, it went to 76, 2% growth. That's awesome. But what gets lost in that is if you look over at the number of high-risk, they went from 92 to 60. So that's 32 kids removed out of the high-risk just in a few short months. Didn't want that to go unsaid.
I was closer to 13 seconds, but that's all right. Any other questions? Thank you guys very much. Very informative. We will move to 9.0, which is action items by consent. We have items 9.01 to 9.11. Would anyone like to remove an item for individual consideration? No, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve action items 9.01 through 9.11 as presented by consent?
Still moved?
Motion by Matt, second by Kathy. Do we have any discussion or questions before we go to pool call vote? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Mike Shamia, yes. Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Mike Tischlis? And Dr. Kathy Karlik-Lorenz?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you. 10.0, individual action items. We have none, so we'll move to 11.0, which is reports. We do have one under 11.02, which is Listening and Learning Report from Dr. Lake.
Yes, thank you, Mike. So our Listening and Learning Tour this year, conversations with our community, obviously, like everything else, has looked different and looked different this fall. Typically, we do 15 to 20 of these in a year. This year, we did about five or six, but we were still able to get some important feedback from our communities. And all of these Listening and Learning events were done virtually. So we're going to run through some quick results here and just do a little refresher. So we had about 200, we had 208 responses. Predominantly, the responses came from the high school community is where the most of our responses were submitted this year, is during our surveys. We had, you know, we presented live, we had, this was the parent speaker, where we had almost 400 parents show up. And then if you look, we had about 350 actually watch it on YouTube afterwards, which was exciting. That shows to me a good interest in what we're doing and wanting updates on our work and the things that we're doing with our students inside our system. And then one of, part of this Listening and Learning this year, you heard us speak about, you know, growth mindset. And the pandemic has highlighted the need for a growth mindset tremendously. If you lived in a fixed mindset over the past 12 months, then you've probably really struggled. And so we were just curious, with our community, when they heard that word, what did that mean? And I think it says it all right there, flexibility, right? So we've all had to do that the last 12 months. So that's a, kind of just a cool wordle to kind of capture something and what people think about a certain topic. Again, quick reminder, these are our five Again, quick reminder, these are our five success measures that were developed back, uh, during our first year in, uh, the eighteen, nineteen school year. And that's, you know, high quality teachers, social emotional well-being of students and staff, mastery of those four important skills, uh, the four Cs, and then, uh, personalized learning for students and staff, and then student satisfaction. We want to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure we have happy kids, uh, walking into our schools every day and walking out of our schools every day. Um, some things that were highlighted, um, are on there, communication, things that we're doing well, personalized learning. So, you can kind of look at those things. Uh, anything that's bolded on there was highlighted from the year before. Things that we can improve on, communication, it seems like every year, since some people think that we do a, a really good job at that. And sometimes, uh, people are thinking that we're not doing such a good job at that. So, you can see that. The facilities piece, you know, I, I think that's important. I think our community recognizes that, and we continue to do a lot of work around, not just the high school campus, but, you know, we have some conversations as a community that we're going to have to have over the next, you know, sixteen to twenty months about how do we move forward with, uh, our next level and next need of facility. So, I think our community recognizes that. And then things that we need to, um, stop, and again, uh, the community keeps telling us, you know, don't focus on your test scores. If we're doing the right things with kids each and every day, um, and we have a great, uh, assessment program in place, which I think we're, uh, developing, and Jill and her team are doing a really good job with that, with what we saw tonight, I think we're going to have the right tools in place to help us gauge that academic performance around student growth, but doing all the other things, that academic piece is just one piece to the pie of our success of our students. There's lots of things that go along with that, that we need to show evidence of those and, um, help our kids go on, not just to be successful at school, but be successful in life. So, those are some of the things that, uh, popped up. So, that is a short, quick report on listening and learning this year, um, but that's kind of the way listening and learning was this year. So, it was not a lot of, uh, engagement, but next year, hopefully, we'll be back in, in person, um, whether we're masked but, or not, but at least we can hopefully be in person, and we can do some more community-wide events. Hopefully, our, uh, Limburg Schools Foundation, uh, breakfast that we kicked off, um, you know, during the nineteen, twenty, that had such an amazing response, that we can, uh, have that event again, and really just continue to tell our story because, um, we have amazing teachers working and support staff and volunteers working with our kids each and every day in those classrooms, and it's important for us to tell that story. So, I'm looking forward to getting back out, back out on the road, um, doing some listening and learning, so. Any questions? All righty.
Thanks, Dr. Lake. And I know that's such a great tool, the listening and learning, and the feedback is so valuable, uh, for the district, so that's great stuff. Um, we'll move to twelve point O. This is citizen comments regarding non-agen items. Uh, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any items that are on the agenda currently through, via email, uh, to boe@limburgschools.ws, uh, and someone will reach back to you and get in contact regarding this. We did have, uh, one comment under this area, and, uh, we have reached back to that person. So, uh, we thank you for your comments, and hopefully soon we'll be, uh, back to in-person where you can come and, and read your comments, uh, openly here to the, to the board. But we appreciate any comments that come in. Uh, we'll move to thirteen point O, which is recess, and in this case, we do have to call for recess. So, uh, Limburg Schools Board of Education pursuant to the notice previously given will now retire to executive session based upon our authority to do so under the provision of Missouri revised statute six one zero point zero two one and six one zero point zero two two. Uh, we, we will discuss items including, uh, legal matter and real property. So, we will now retire, or, or recess.
Yep. All right.
Thank you. Okay. Having completed our executive session, we'll move to fifteen point O, which is adjournment. I have a motion to adjourn regular meeting number fifteen twenty-eight.
Still moved.
Second.
By Kathy, second by Jennifer. We can all just say, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned.